Uh, two more. Meg and Ken. One, two, three, four. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the North Hampton County Council Meeting of July 20th, 2017 to order. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated. Ms. Zembo, can you call the roll?
Mr. Bennell?
Here.
Mr. Kuzic?
Present.
Mr. Deetz? Mrs. Ferraro?
Here.
Mr. Geisenberg? Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
Mr. Warner. Okay, everybody's present except for Mr. Deetz, Mr. Geisenberg, and Mr. Warner.
So we have six present and three absent. Okay, next item is the approval of the minutes from the July 6th, 2017 meeting.
Make a motion for acclamation.
Moved by Mr. Kraft to approve by acclamation, seconded by Mr. Bennell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, next we have courtesy of the floor. I see we have a few people signed up. I believe all of them are here for the central booking, um, public hearing, so we'll have them wait until that time period. Is there anyone that would like to address council on any other issue besides the central booking ordinance? Okay, uh, there being none, we will move next into confirmation of appointments. And at this time, I'll call on Mr. Kraft to introduce those resolutions.
Thank you, John. Um, I'll just do these all in a row. Be resolved by North Hampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointment, reappointment as indicated hereafter. For the Farmland Preservation Board, we have the reappointments of Robert Dower and Terry Cromer, for terms to expire 6/30/20. Lehigh Valley Workforce Development Board Incorporated, we have the reappointments in the business category of Mr. Stephen J. Bailey, Ellen Kingsley Esquire, John McDonald, and Sharon Shire, to expire, term to expire 6/30 of 20. We have the Mental Health Early Intervention and Developmental Programs Advisory Board. Uh, have the appointment of Andrea Beauregard. Her term is to expire 1/23/20. And then the Personnel Appeals Board, we have the appointments of Timothy E. Henkel and Yvonne Johnson Milligan, term to expire 2/3 of 19. Uh, we went over these in the Personnel Committee meeting last night, and we approved them unanimously for tonight's meeting.
Okay, um, first of all, are any of those folks here this evening with us? No? Um, any discussion on the resolution? Uh, there being none, Ms. Zembo, can we call the vote?
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Bennell?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of six to zero.
Passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the Controller's Report. Mr. Barron is not here this evening. Uh, next is the County Executive's Report. Uh, I don't see Mr. Brown. Ms. Allen, did you have a report? No report? Uh, next is Old Business. Uh, first item on the agenda is a public hearing on the ordinance titled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Allocation of Funds Through the Central Booking Plan Fees to the Designated Central Booking Center." Uh, this ordinance was introduced by Mr. Phillips and Mr. Deetz at the July 6th meeting, and the public hearing, debate, and possible vote are scheduled to be held this evening. And I'll just, uh, read it into the record. It states that, "Now, therefore, it is hereby ordained by the North Hampton County Council that, one, the central booking fees shall be deposited into a special central or regional booking center fund established in the county. Two, the central booking fees are to be tracked in reference to the central booking facility from which they originated. Three, those fees are to be used to pay the annual fees of the Clean T-1 line and the LiveScan CPIN annual maintenance agreement. Four, should the annual booking fees collected exceed the amount needed for the above-mentioned cost, the remaining balance will be used to cover budget needs in the overall county's central booking system. Five, should the annual booking fees collected fall short of the amount needed for the above-mentioned cost, the specific central booking facility is to come up with the difference to cover the above-mentioned annual costs." And this ordinance was advertised and adopted, et cetera, and so forth. Um, at this time, I would like to conduct the public hearing with regard to the ordinance, and I do have three people that signed up. Uh, first I have Cindy Miller.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak again on the booking center and your ordinance. I was notified about the ordinance, and we did more homework on our end that we'd like to share with you before you take a vote this evening. Um, if you decide to take a vote this evening. We actually-
Cindy, could you pull the mic down?
Sure. We actually-
Is that bad? I want to make sure you're being picked out.
Okay. We actually researched other counties and what is going on with their booking centers. And then I have a few questions about North Hampton County in general. Montgomery County actually has 12 booking centers.
Wow.
Including their county. They have additional sites that are written in their plan. Should they meet the center's requirements, they can add other centers. Eleven of the centers are in their police departments. They get, they charge a $300 processing fee. The way it's set up, and I actually have copies of the plan, plans. Five percent, or $15 per person, covers the administrative costs. Ninety-five percent and $285 goes for, to the government entities, the county and the local municipalities where the person was processed. In 2016, at $300, they collected $536,663.85 in criminal and zero in magistrate fees. Then I, we looked at Bucks County. They have 13 centers. They are set up where five percent is for administrative, as per the state law, and 95 percent goes towards technology, including equipment, procurement of equipment, maintenance, and circuit phone line costs, and partial for staffing and operation costs. The way that they allocate their funding is they divide, they look at the total booking fees, then they divide by the individual site submissions, which it's basically like a prorata. They allocate a percentage to the total, and then they multiply that total by the total fees collected minus the five percent administrative costs to determine their payment costs. They then allow everyone, all the centers would apply in January for dispersment of the funds for the prior year. At $150, they collected $567,430.14 for criminal and $17,800 for magistrate. We looked at Lehigh County. I don't have the particulars of the plan, but they actually collected $93,000. So then-
Is Allentown the only booking center in Lehigh?
That's what I'm, I'm not, I don't know, and maybe the chief can-
It is?
Because he was doing more research on this as he was feeding me this information this afternoon. So then we looked at North Hampton County, and we understand that $10,840.16 was collected in criminal and $2,405 was collected in magistrate. So the question that we have is why, if the fee is $300, is judicial only collecting $10,000? And we have three booking centers, and we, we understand, we're hearing that the concern is covering the costs. But yet, you look at all these other counties, and our chief will talk about Carvin. He has more information than I have on some of the other counties, but they're covering all their costs. Plus, they have overage. Bucks County, with their prorata, even has a spreadsheet that shows each of their booking center and all of the allocations of what was collected and then their dispersments. So, you know, we'll share all that, we're glad to share all this information with you. So the question, we, like I said, we have a lot of quest, few questions as far as North Hampton County is. Number one, why? And I know it's judicial versus legislative, but why? Why are we only collecting $10,000 when the fee is 300, and we know there should be a lot more being collected? Um, we understand that the county executive had commented last night in a finance meeting that there's a deficit of $1.5 million for our booking center. So my question is, number one, how did, was that amount derived at? We'd like to see a breakdown of what that $1.5 million deficit is. And then, um, I'm understanding we might be 100,000 in the red with all the centers. I don't know. But I'd really like to see a breakout per center of what is going on. And that's what we requested in the beginning when we asked the county to do an audit, when we were here before. Um, we also see that the county executive had commented that there was $80,000 in overtime derived at, um, for Lehigh Township and the adjacent municipalities that use our booking center. We'd like to know how that $80,000 was derived at. Because, I'll be honest, I'm a supervisor, and I'd like to know how a county executive tries to understand our budget when we were not questioned or asked, or asked to show anything. So I would think as a township official, I would understand Lehigh Township's budget a lot better than a county executive. So I would like to know how that $80,000 overtime was derived at as well. Um, and then, we had asked about the audit, and we'd really like an opportunity to at least look at the audit and try to figure out what was deter, excuse me, determined in the audit and answer any questions that anybody else has.
Yeah, I, with, with regards to the audit, Mr. Barron, uh, gave us a pretty extensive presentation on some of his findings. Um, I would refer you to his office. I, I think he might be able to clarify some of those numbers.
Mm-hmm. So we would be able-
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I offered to Lehigh Township that I could work with Mr. Barron to, uh, to facilitate that, to, to get us together. Um, I, I have an understanding of the audit. I don't have it right in front of me right now. But I'd like to get Mr. Barron and have him go through with, uh, the supervisors and the township manager and the chief, so that they understand. I, I sort of have committed that I'll work with Mr. Barron to get that taken care of.
Yeah, I, we'd appreciate that, but that $1.5 million kind of, that has us a little concerned there because we created our booking center. We put in two jails. We know what it costs to do these things because we've done it. So I'm very, I, I'd really like an itemization of this $1.5 million of where, where the deficit is and, and a breakdown, and, and where the money went.
I have a question.
Certainly, Mr. Kraft.
Yes.
I like your numbers, okay? But Montgomery County has 1.4 million people. We have maybe 300,000 if we're lucky.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's what, four times bigger than we are? So, I mean, their budget and their, their booking centers, 12, sounds about right. We have three, they have 12. I mean, that kind of fits. I mean, you know, statistics, you can get any number from any place, and they don't match up to what's really going on. And the other thing is Bucks County has like 650,000 people. So they're twice as big as us, you know, closer to Philly. You know, I mean, it's a totally different ballgame. Our, our nearest person is Lehigh County, and they have one booking center, and everybody from Lehigh County drives down there. So, I mean, that's just my take on it. I like your numbers. I like your research. But I'd like to have the research equivalent to what we have here, a 300,000 populated area.
Okay, well, even if you cut it in half, let's say you take half a buck of Bucks County, and they collected, what did I say they collected? Um, $567,000, still at close to 300, or what, 280?
Yeah, we don't have the-
So we collected 13,000.
We don't have the president judge or the courts here to answer-
Right.
How they charge their fees and what they charge. I mean, they, they should be here. I mean, you're here, so it would have been nice if they were invited too to answer these questions, but we don't have those answers.
Okay. And that's what I said. I understand the difference between legislative and judicial. But our concern is legislatively, what is being proposed and seriously taking into consideration funding these booking centers, because I really think it's gonna be a big mistake if it's not.
Okay.
But, and I do want the breakdown in our overtime as well, how that, in the 80,000 overtime, how the county executive derived at that number. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Scott Fogel, Police Chief, Lehigh Township. Welcome back.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna be probably a lot more brief than Cindy Miller was, only because she touched on a lot of the things that I already was, uh, going to talk about. Um, but I would say, Ken, you actually hit on a lot of the, on one really big key point, and that, and that simply is, the judicial and the political side of this really needs to get on the same page with this so that we all are doing the same thing. Um, the one big thing I think that, in my mind, stands out is probably that, you know, we're looking at fines, court costs, booking center fees that are collected in the court administrator's office, and then they get funneled back out. What's the percentage of each of those, and when are they going out? You know, what's the priority? I have no idea. I've never looked at it. I've never seen it. But it would seem to me that you have a known cost, which is your booking centers, that that should become a priority. You know, and, and, and a court cost, obviously, too, is the same thing. There's another known factor there. That should be your next priority. Um, I don't know how their percentages funnel out as compared to Bucks, Montgomery, North Hampton, or Lehigh, but I would certainly suggest that's something that, that probably ought to be looked at, just so we can derive the right method of sending that money back out. In addition to that, just to touch on one of the things that Ms. Miller said regarding her $80,000 overtime expense that, that seems to be thrown out there. I can tell you that none of our officers are driving down here and costing us anywhere close to $80,000 to come down to North Hampton County Central Booking to stop and drop somebody off. The majority, the overwhelming majority, in fact, I could probably tell you, no more than four times all year have we had anybody come down to Central Booking to drop somebody off. And that would account at this point because of the way they re, you know, revamped the system to probably about an hour and a half total time down and back. That's it. So, the number doesn't match up. I, I can tell you that right now. And if he's looking at my overtime budget and trying to explain somehow that our high overtime is caused by this, he would be greatly mistaken because our overtime issues are derived from being shorthanded and covering costs of open shifts, not central booking, not at all. Our guys do all the processing in our department while they're on duty because they have that luxury, they have that time where the gaps happen to lie in there that they can do it. So it's not an issue for us. It's one of the reasons why we don't staff specifically for central booking. Um, one of the other things, too, Lehigh County Booking Center, it is correct, they only have one booking center, but I would certainly submit that theirs is far more centralized than what we're dealing with here. Uh, you know, to expect your rural communities over on the western, northern, northern and western side of the county to drive 45 minutes down and back, not just us, I mean, that's one part of it. But you've also got every single person who's been arrested that has to come down here and do that very same thing. Because whether we process them at Lehigh Township, or they come down here to be processed, they've got to make that effort to get in and get it done, if they're not processed immediately upon arrest, which is the majority of them. Most of them are arrested by appointment. So if they're not coming to us to get it done, which may be 15 minutes, five minutes, 10 minutes worth of a drive, they've got to find a way to get all the way over here, which isn't always an easy task because many times we're dealing with, with people that don't drive or can't drive, lost their license. Maybe they were all in a car crash from a DUI, and they can't get here. So where does that leave them? It leaves them unprocessed. Now you've got an issue with offender identification. That needs to be addressed. You know, that's the back end of this whole thing that's kind of being, kind of walked around and nobody's really talking much about, but that's a really huge part of it. Because, you know, what's the incentive for somebody who's been arrested to drive all the way to Easton to get processed? You know, they already feel like, you know, they, they've been arrested. However they view that, whether it's negatively or, or what, you know, there, there's less incentive for them to come all the way over here to get that process completed. What's gonna happen more often than not is they're gonna be waiting for a constable to come to their door, pick them up, and then bring them down here, and that's gonna increase more costs. So, it's just some other things to think about, and this is all people, you know, quite honestly, that, that, that we deal with on a regular basis that you probably see at the polls, too. Um, it's just, it's not the, an end of it that I think I want to miss because, you know, when I look at this, when we created this booking center, it wasn't just for Lehigh Township. Otherwise, we wouldn't have written the other municipalities into it the way that we did. You know, it's meant to be for all the departments to be able to utilize. In a perfect world, anybody across the state would be able to use the center, and none of this county, you know, specific stuff where the counties run the booking centers. Because all these systems are interconnected on a statewide basis. So, really, the way that it's being done at its best in Pennsylvania isn't even really at its best. Uh, in North Hampton County here, I can tell you that, um, you know, we're, we're trying, from what I'm reading in, in the ordinance so far, to funnel everything through North Hampton County. Whereas Bucks, Montgomery, this is the part I take away from Bucks and Montgomery that I find the most fascinating, is they kind of wash their hands predominantly of all of this stuff, and they funnel the money right back out to the departments that run the booking centers. Far more practical. You know, it's one less thing the county government has to even deal with. They're not dealing with overhead costs of equipment, manpower, facilities, any of that stuff. It goes right back to the municipality. Mostly, you know, I believe all the counties, they do operate the one that's in the prison, but it's not meant as a central processing center where everybody goes. It's where they're brought, if they're coming down to the prison, and the prison has a need to process, and they can. So the majority of their booking isn't even happening at their prison facilities. It's actually happening in the satellite locations throughout those counties. So, um, I will tell you, I do have numbers from Lehigh County and Carvin County. Carvin County, uh, their number last year, 2016, was roughly $40,000. Lehigh County was roughly $93,000. And that's one center in each. Now, Carvin County has another location at the State Police Barracks, but that's separate entity from what the county would funnel money back for. They don't, they don't cover the cost of the State Police Center. So, um, I have copies of the plans. I would be happy to leave those here with you. One other thing, when, when you talk about, you know, the breakdown and keeping track of what happens from each center as far as how many people are processed and how much the actual number would be of reclamation and fees versus what's actually collected. Bucks County does a very good job of that. They have an Excel spreadsheet of it. It tells you exactly how many people were processed in every center. Tells you exactly what the percentage that they were funneled back in, in fees to each center as well. So it kind of gives a good breakdown of all that. And even discerns that, you know, any OTNs that have a J for juvenile wouldn't be included in that. So it even excludes that stuff. So they do a very good job of, of tracking everything. Um, again, it's just information for you, and the plans, again, for you to look over just to get a little bit more of a comparison as to what's happening in other places. Uh, because it almost seems like we're trying to reinvent the wheel, or maybe we don't really have to.
Well, we'll take that for our-
Sure.
-records. Thank you.
Chief, I, I have a, I have a question for you, Chief, if I may.
Certainly.
Um, you said you were around when you set up the center?
Correct. I was the one that did the grant for it.
Okay, last night when we were talking about it, um, it's six communities that use the center? Plus Monroe and State Police?
Uh, for, well, it would be, they can come down and use it for a suspect ID if they need to.
Right.
They don't generally come down, they don't come down to do processing, criminal processing, per se. They could, but that would interfere with that cross-county issue where fees wouldn't be collected then. So they don't do that. Hey, it's Matt. Sorry about that.
But it was, uh, six communities that, that are supposed to be in this agreement?
Oh, it's Lehigh Township, Allentown Township, North Hampton Borough, North Catasauqua, Walnutport Borough.
Okay, because I kept saying five, and I was told six a lot, so I was five as well.
Yeah, it should be five.
And, um, you were supposed to get together with your grant, some kind of, uh, agreement between all these communities to, uh, to support this center? Was that ever done? Have you ever gotten an agreement between the five communities, like you were supposed to, to, to support the center that was there?
Well, in that grant, it was written that, you know, that was, basically, in a nutshell, the way that was supposed to work is if there is a shortfall and there's not money available or the, uh, grant doesn't, after the grant expires, if the funding isn't there, if this stuff doesn't self-generate, then the communities would be gone to regarding that.
Did the five communities make that agreement?
No, we haven't come to that.
So you still haven't come to that agreement for funding it yourself? And, and, um, to back to the, uh, well, it's five municipalities, but I think last night when we were talking, we were talking about the reason why you wanted a center up there. Back then, can you fill us in on what it was like when you had to run down here all the time with your residents? And why a center was so important?
Sure.
Because that was hit on last night a lot by the county executive and-
I'd be curious to have heard his words. I didn't hear it last night, and I only heard little excerpts of what was talked about, but what I can tell you is, when I first started up at Lehigh, it was not uncommon for our guys to have to come down here, and they would be down here for hours. When I say hours, I mean anywhere from three to five hours at times. That's just not practical. I mean, when you look at the grand scope of what that's costing, not just in overtime, but, you know, wear and tear on vehicles, just the, the additional risk of having to drive that every single time to come down here to process, and again, not just for us, but the people we're bringing down as well.
Mm-hmm.
You're talking about a pretty significant amount. Uh, this, you know, and if this were working the way that it's supposed to work, there would have been fees collected from North Hampton County as far back as I believe 2006 or '08, whenever the initial booking center was set up, which, for whatever reason, fell through the cracks because nobody ever followed through and made sure it was approved through PCCD. So every year, you've been processing in this county hundreds, if not thousands, of people, probably thousands, and never collected $1 towards central processing, which means the county has been footing that bill ever since central processing was opened in North Hampton County.
But back to my question, you did it because there was significant overtime for just your community alone. If you had the other four, that's a lot of time that you had people off the street doing it. So it was more advantageous to you, and it was a monetary gain by not having people out the street and out of the place and overtime and everything coming down here to book.
Well, I think a monetary gain is one spin on it, but I would certainly say that-
Well, it's, you've, you've, you have people that are working at the job they're hired for, not driving down here. So that's a huge-
Exactly. That is-
Plus for the cer, for the, then that was the argument last night. And that $80,000 number, if I remember, I might be wrong, Ms. Allen, I'm not right, but he came up with that because back before you had your booking center, you were spending on average in five communities, or he kept saying six, about $80,000 in overtime just by coming down here and spending four hours of time booking somebody.
That may be the case. I'm not sure.
That's where that number came from.
That's where that number came from.
Not your number for your-
Okay.
Police Department, but for all of them combined back in the day before you had the booking center. So see, this is my, my problem with giving you money for a booking center, and we gave you money for a booking center.
Right, but I'm not asking you for money for a booking center.
No, 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 no. I understand what you're asking for. You're asking the courts to give you the money that you're, you're due by what, what, what the law that's enacted, that little caveat you found after you ran out of your grant in, in the thing and then decided to pursue it. You and the district magistrate and whoever else came last time. Which, hey, if you're entitled to it, it's yours, but the county did not build that booking center. We had not a dime of our money into that. You guys did it on your own for the reason of saving money and time with your officers, for the five municipalities up there. Am I, am I wrong?
Well, and again, no, I, what I would add to that, and, and the part is that you're neglecting to mention is the fact that you're keeping officers on the road and public safety consequences.
I, I understand it. I, that's all part of why you wanted a booking center up there.
And if I believe, if I remember correctly, that is actually predominantly the, the primary reason that was written into that. And sure, there is a financial component.
There's a huge financial component. So now, having this booking center, how many years now have you had it?
I believe we're going into our fourth year.
Fourth year. And you still don't have the five municipality agreement to fund this booking center?
No, because, you know what, it's, it's interesting, because for the first three years, I was working with the, the Chiefs of Police Association and trying to get things squared away with county courts to try and get the county plan reestablished because there wasn't one. So I couldn't really get anything accomplished because there was no booking center plan.
But I mean, what does it cost to you to run this booking center?
For us?
For, yeah, I mean, you're, you're, you're doing the whole burden. I understand.
It's approximately $10,000 for the maintenance fees.
$10,000 divided by five communities is how much money from your budget? Is it 500 bucks a community?
About 2,000, isn't it?
You know, it's about a, you know, okay, whatever it is, I'm sorry.
10,000 divided by two.
2,000, sorry. Yeah, it's not 500. I wish it was 500. I could get that boy I wanted. Uh, you know, you know what I'm saying? Your communities that are using your center, should they not, shouldn't you not have that agreement now that they're contributing to it?
I guess I would ask the next question, though, is why haven't we had a plan in place for all these years where these fees should have been collected to take care of this? Because ultimately, that's the way this is supposed to work. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and I understand that that's the way it's supposed to work, but it hasn't worked that way for five years. You decided to open a center up on your own to save yourself money and time and all that stuff, and now we have a central booking center that takes you to drop and go. And I know it's a drive because I keep saying you can't get the Valhalla from here. It's a pain in the butt. I understand the drive and all, what it takes an officer. And I understand how much of a- And I understand how much of a, it's, it really helps and I'm not against that either. But we're here doing this, this, this thing that somebody wrote up hastily and we have no input from the courts and we're not fixing any of the things that we need fixing. You don't have your five municipality agreement that you're supposed to have by your thing when you wrote it up, yet.
Well, one of the things that you're, you're not right on there is that we, we do have an agreement between the courts as well as the Cjab, the Criminal Justice Advisory Board, because they all did agree that that center should be up and running and that it was necessary.
No, I understand. The courts gave, gave the approval to use it or whatever that was.
And so, did you put a justice advisory board?
Which, which, I understand it, you know, if there's booking money and, you know, we don't collect anything, that's a whole nother conundrum we have to visit with the courts and it's not ours to visit. But, you know, I mean, I'm just...
And I understand that. And that's my point, though, is that maybe we need to get together with them and try and figure this out.
Yeah.
Because right now, what we're doing is grossly wrong. There's, there's nothing correct about the way this is operating right now.
Because I, I think Mr. Phillips' intent here is very good, um, you know, it, what, what he's trying to get to, but I think we're really ahead of the part where we should be to start doing this when we don't have all the other pieces in place. I mean, we, we should hear from the courts. They should come here and tell us what's going on, where the fees are, why, why we aren't collecting the fees. You know, I mean, we could do this. We're not collecting fees. This is, this is, you know where this goes, in the toilet.
Sure. And that's exactly why we're here today.
You know, so...
Because, you know, we read through that and, and there was obviously some concerns that came up, you know? And that's not to disrespect what they tried to come up with because it really...
Yeah, I think what they're coming, I understand why, why they're coming up with, and everything you're doing up there has a lot of merit. I'm not on the opposite side of it. But on the opposite side of, there's a lot of pieces here. We don't have them. We need a lot more information. And to pass legislate, just to pass it, to pass it for fund before anything's right, why would we do it?
I agree. I agree. And insofar as that, this is why we brought this information to you, just to give more comparisons. I only saw the ordinance just a few days ago, actually. So, I really didn't have a whole lot of opportunity to read through all of it up until the last couple of days to kind of get that information to your hands.
Right. I mean, they, they tried to pick everything on here, but, you know, the annual booking fee collected falls short, the amount needed for the above-mentioned cost of specific central booking facility, come up with the difference, you know, you guys come up with the difference. And you don't even have that agreement available yet together, which I think you should... And you don't even have that agreement available yet together, which I think you should...